We're going to call the special meeting for Wednesday, January 28th or 22nd. To order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hope you're still working with these things.
Not again.
Here we go again. I would please ask for anybody who wants to speak tonight to please sign the sign-up sheet for public comment. And put your phones on airplane mode or turn them off, whatever you need to do to so they don't interrupt a meeting.
It sounds a lot better.
I ask for when you do get called to speak that you speak to the council itself and then if I need to ask staff for any recommendations then we will go over to them but keep your questions to the board, okay? Anybody who comes up to speak, don't turn around and ask anybody else, just keep them all up here. I ask you please. And we'll get through this really quickly. Upcoming meetings. Quarterly planning commission meeting will be Monday, January 27th at 7:30 PM. Town council meeting will be Monday, February 3rd at 7:30 PM. Parks and Recreation Committee meeting will be Tuesday, February 18th at 7:30 PM. Is there any other meetings?
Actually Parks and Rec will be January 30th.
January 30th?
I'm sorry, I thought I-
Not the 18th?
I thought I said that last month but maybe I didn't.
January 30th?
Yeah, we were just under some time restraints to get the concerts in the park and things like that scheduled.
January 30th is the planning commission meeting here at 7:30 PM. Alrighty, we're on to the meeting items. Public comment. Has everybody signed the paper that needs to speak? Okay. Eric Hewitt, do you want to speak up here? Just come up, give your name and your address.
My name's Eric Hewitt, I live at 9371 Waynesboro Pike. Basically, just wanted to, I was expecting a presentation first and maybe some of my questions would have been answered. Basically, I was just wondering, you know, what were some of the steps that are being taken to fix the problem?
Did your problem not your way?
Yeah.
I think they're going to press the point. I'll let that go to Kathy here. Kathy, can you tell him what's going to happen now? I'll let the ice cream-
You'd rather make your presentation?
Can we just make the presentation?
Yeah.
Because I think it's going to address a lot of people's questions if we do the presentation first.
Bob, do you want to speak after the presentation? Bob, is there a Bob?
Yeah, Bob Ladani.
Okay. We'll do a presentation first and then we'll take your questions though. Because you might have other questions come up.
Just quick, what are you, just curiously, what are you seeing at your house? Are you getting brown water or dark brown or what's the-
So, I mean, it's been, you know, it's been a yellow consistent. But here lately it has been, obviously last night was really brown. I wouldn't say it's ever really been clear. And actually, the amount of chlorine that's been in it, I know you're trying to fix the problem and obviously chlorine helps the problem, but it just seems like it's been a little excessive when you, you know, when you call the town office and you're told, recommend not to bathe in it. Well, I have two young children that, you know, you have to bathe in it, so, you know, at what point is too much chlorine also not healthy for you also on top of the brown water and, but, you know.
Okay, great, thank you. And the presentation should cover us, we hope.
Okay, so we'll move on to the presentation. Kathy?
I have PowerPoint. Can you guys have a copy of it in front of you?
Yes.
Basically, what I've done, just everything that's happened, what staff has been doing and as well as others since our last meeting on January 6th. They're not working. Uh, no. It's okay. Okay, give me one second. So Amy's going to do it?
Yeah, go ahead, Esther, do it now.
Okay. Okay, whoop, there we go. So we'll start with the water line work that staff has done since January 6th of 2020. We began on Waynesboro Pike in the area of Track Road on January 8th. Our leak detection specialist and staff had noticed an area on Track Road that had been laying wet for a while. We had the leak detection specialist come out and he pinpointed an area that he believed the leak would be if, and he said if the leak was not found there, it's under the road. So when the staff and contractor went out on January 8th, they dug down and they kept digging and kept trying to determine and find where the leak was. Unfortunately, we did not find the leak where, the first location where the specialist had said it was. But while we were in there, we installed a new valve and a pipe in one location. Staff continued to listen to the valves on either side of the roadway and what, how we determine there's a leak is if it's screaming. So if you're listening to the valves or the curb box and areas, if you're hearing a lot of noise, that means there's a leak. So we've determined the leak is in fact under the road there at Waynesboro Pike. After that work on January 8th, we didn't receive any complaints in the town office. So then today, we got an estimate to bore under the road and do the water line work there. Contractor and staff went out today. Unfortunately, they are not able to bore underneath the road. They got about one foot in and hit rock and couldn't go any further. So after talking to the contractors and state highway, the best solution is to open cut the road and install a six inch from the existing six inch line and reduce to two inches at the three connections. This entails saw cut the roadway, install the line, and the road will be, need to be milled and paved 25 feet each way per state highway. We're working on an estimate, waiting on an estimate right now. State highway's already been contacted and they've given us permission. We hope to be able to get out next week and finally complete this repair on Waynesboro Pike. That's just an example of the new line or the small section they put in with the valve. It's what it kind of looks like under the ground. On January 13th, staff repaired the water line leak on North Seaton Avenue. That was all completed in one day and we determined that was, that leak was losing about 10 gallons per minute. Notices that we received from the public or complaints we received in the town office since January 6th. On January 8th, we were notified by the maintenance staff in Frederick that there was possibly brown water at the elementary school. Staff responded along with staff. We found only clear water at three separate locations. We talked to the principal. Samples were taken at three separate locations in the school and everything was normal. The FCPS staff said that they frequently get reports of brown water in their toilets at a lot of their schools and they typically just come up, flush the toilets and the problem goes away. That was the only problem that they were aware of at the school. On January 10th, the sleep-in, they had drained their pool pearl coated and when refilling it and they used a lot of pressure, the water was yellow. Staff is working with sleep-in, however, this is the same problem that occurred the last time. Sleep-in did this with their pool, so more than likely it's something internal for the sleep-in. January 12th, 116 South Seaton Avenue, stated black oily specks on the shower floor and my water isn't ever clear. Staff offered to come out but no one was home. January 15th, 318 Mountaineers Way, stated still experiencing brown water, replacing filters about once a week and purchasing three or four cases of bottled water. This is just the location map of all the complaints that we received up until January Complaints received on January 21st to the 22nd, so Tuesday and Wednesday of this week. As you can see, we received 14 total complaints ranging Timber Mill Run, West Main, Worthen's Way, Hampton Valley Road, Ramblewood Court, Ramblewood Drive, Stonehurst Drive, Track Road, Lincoln on the Park and Huntley Circle. On January 20th at 9:15 PM, there was a large spike seen at the water treatment plant. The spike rose to 650 gallons per minute and lasted for just a minute or so. Staff is investigating the possible causes of that. This type of spike greatly disturbs the system and that's why we saw these complaints on Tuesday and Wednesday. Again, that's just a breakdown of where those complaints came in. Steps that we've taken so far outside of the things that we just discussed. January 7th and 8th, staff met with prospective engineers for the pre-bid meeting for installation of a clarifier. Eleven engineers attended. Staff continues to work on MDE, with MDE for grant and loan application as well as USDA. January 7th, the mayor and town planner attended a meeting at Mount St. Mary's. I didn't attend, so I don't know if the mayor wants to speak to that meeting. On January 13th, the mayor and I met with George Brenton about, at the provincial house about their facility and they're extremely want to be a part of the solution and are looking at ways that they can help. The same with, on January 13th, we also met with Al Flumen of FEMA and there's going to be a meeting facilitated between their staff and our staff and maps provided, so we're all trying to work together to put an end to this. On January 15th, staff and the town manager met with representatives from the county. From the initial, these are just my notes from the initial meeting on January 15th. Basically, the initial meeting was to review our water system information and collect water samples. The water samples are being analyzed by the Division of Utilities and Solid Waste Management's laboratory and we're hoping to have the results in their final report before the February 3rd meeting. Once we have the test results, we hope to better understand what might be the primary cause of the discolored water and what follow-up, follow-up actions may be appropriate. Unfortunately, they're still working on their draft report. Like I said, we hope to have it completed for the February 3rd, 2020 town meeting. As soon as it's completed, staff will meet with their representatives again to go over their findings and they want to come up and take a few more samples around town. Other updates, January 8th, I think I let everybody know the Senator Huff's office reached out to offer any state assistance. January 8th, we were contacted by a resident devised an area near the vacant lots in Brookfield that is always wet. We, staff investigated, could not locate any leak and as of right now, all the curb boxes were quiet, so we don't have any reason to believe there's any leaks related to the vacant lots. But we're going to continue to check some other curb boxes and other vacant lots around town. January 14th, MDE has offered to send a sampler to town to gather samples from town locations as well as locations that have chronic problems. We do not have a date as of yet. January 14th, staff and the contractor began three days of sewer relining prep work. We did utilize a higher flow, however, we did not receive any complaints in the office related to that work. Some things that we had talked about with the county and in-house, and these are just some things to consider, we're not saying this is the end-all, be-all answer. There's could be a lot of things that are contributing to it. This could be one of them. Unlined ductile iron pipe, basically anything that was put in before 1952 could have potential corrosion control problems which can lead to tuberculosis of the line. The tuberculosis can fall off during high flow. On this, it's just my pointer, Matty, the red, is this the pointer? Yeah, that one right there. So this is the inside of a pipe. This is DePaul Street and inside the pipe here, you can see, this is what they call tuberculosis. It's basically where the line is, has been corroded over time. This is also, it's not a very good picture of it, but that's the line cut open there and that's the inside of the line and that's DePaul Street. Treatment such as orthophosphate, which puts a fine layer over the tuberculosis so it won't soft off during high velocity is one option. Obviously, cleaning, relining and new piping is also an option. In 2004, the town began increasing the pH levels from, to 7.5 to 8.0 for corrosion control. Prior to that time, no corrosion control was utilized. This is why tuberculosis is occurring, occurring in some of the piping such as galvanized and unlined ductile iron. This, the county took samples where, were taken to determine the makeup of the brown water, see whether it's sediment, iron or manganese. Other things that we're thinking or looking at are due to the weather conditions over late summer and early fall. The town relied very heavily on the wells and less from the lake. Samples were taken from the wells, possibly up the pH levels from the plant to the town in cooperation with some other efforts. Basically, it's just a process of elimination and we're starting to rule out things on the town side. We're continuing to look for funding for installation of new lines. I've been in contact with our representative from USDA and she sent me some information Some next steps, just an idea of what it costs to repair water lines, water line repairs. It costs about $30,000, $300,000 to fix 1,000 linear feet of water line. That includes all the processes, the saw cutting for the trench, the eight-inch ductile iron, water main, the eight-inch gate valves, the copper water services, tie-ins at existing water mains, paving patch in our trench, that does not include milling or overlaying for large areas and any traffic flagging for the duration. We determined three areas in town that possibly could have tuberculosis and they're probably the oldest lines that we currently have. The North Seaton Avenue section from North Avenue to 17349 North Seaton Avenue, which is .55 miles or 2,900 linear feet. Waynesboro Pike, Track Road to 9322 Waynesboro Pike, it's .2 miles and it's 1,100 feet. And then you have DePaul Street, which is North Seaton Avenue to the dead end, which is .35 miles at 1,850 feet. We're estimating the total cost to replace those three sections of line is about $1.75 Just a few miscellaneous things. We thank everybody that's been on the lookout for individuals and companies that hook up to the hydrants. This information has been vital as we continue to move forward. We've been very active with sending out alert FC notices for each event such as water line repair, sewer relining prep work. We've seen a 26% increase in subscribers since October of 2019, so keep signing up so we can get the word out. And we're going to continue to work with MDE, USDA and Frederick County as well as provincial house and FEMA to improve the overall function of our water and sewer services. That's a basic summary of what's been done since our last meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Hewitt, do you have any questions you would like to ask now?
Alright, so just kind of bear with me if you would while I go through some of my notes I was jotting down here. Some of my questions were answered. My house obviously is on the oldest lines. So, you know, I don't want to come off as being rude, but at the end of the day, it's all coming down to money, it sounds like. You know, we know what the problem is, we just have to fix the problem and the patch jobs aren't fixing it. So I did have one question when you said three sections are going to be repaired down the, from a six inch to a three inch and three connections, is that going to be full stick connections or is that going to be three splices?
It's a full section, new section.
Full sections of pipe, so enough to go the whole way under that road?
It's going to be replace that under the road.
Okay, alright. I mean, basically guys, if I handed you a straw that looked like that, you wouldn't drink out of it. I mean, that's pretty rough. And I don't know how anybody's expected to drink out of it and we all have to use the water. We have no other source. So to not fix it's really not an option. I mean, it's not like we can just dig a well in our backyard. We have to use the water. And, you know, what's that going to lead to 10 years of drinking that? What's the end call is going to be? Are we all going to end up, you know, having some medical problems at the end of it? Because it can't be healthy. I mean, they're saying it's okay to drink it, but there's no possible way that's okay to drink. Every restaurant in town is drinking it, our schools are drinking it. We're bringing Dunkin' Donuts and Rutters and stuff and people are going to be coming from everywhere drinking that stuff. I mean, I understand it's a lot of money and I'm not saying anybody can just fork that out, but you can't just leave it. I mean, and splice jobs and patches, I know in front of my house, you know, there were to connect or there were to, the valves are, it's been fixed so many times every time the mail lady runs over it, it's just, it's not working. I mean, I know it's not an overnight fix, but we got to do something here. I mean, so, so basically, I mean, it's not the spikes in water that's doing it, it's bad lines. I mean, I personally work at Emmitsburg Glass, alright? Every Friday, someone from the town comes out to work and tests our water. So that must be a mandatory thing because we wouldn't just do it if we didn't want to. And it don't pass, they got to flush the fire hydrants because we're the last one on the lines. So it's basically stagnant water. So that means every Friday, it's going to spike. So where else is this going to spike at? On the end of every line? So we can't keep pulling that as an excuse of, well, it's a spike here, it's a spike there, what, the town is doing the spike. I mean, and I'm not blaming you guys for it, it's, it's money. I get it, but damn, we all want to live a long life. We don't want to come up 15 years with all kinds of cancers or whatever medical conditions we might end up with. I definitely don't want it for my kids. I mean, like I said, I'm not a rude ignorant person, it's just the facts are the facts and it comes down to money. If it's 1952, it needs to be replaced. It's steel, it's galvanized, it's going to rust, it's going to rot. It just needs to be fixed. I mean, I know you can't really, from what I've been, from what I've gathered, you can't line it. It's not a sewer line. It's our drinking water. There's a reason why you can't line them. But there's a reason why you can't drink it like that also, the way that picture was. I mean, I just hope at the end of all this, the meetings and meetings and meetings and meetings, you know, we come up with more than a couple patch jobs here and there and we got to pull the lines out and replace them. It's not the new, if you look at that map, it's not the new developments that's having the problems, it's the old lines.
It actually is.
Is it?
The newer developments are where you're seeing the problem.
So is that because it's running through the old lines to their development?
So if you look at this picture right there, that's all new development. That's all new development up in the corner there.
Right, so that's running through, through the line coming out of town, out to Waynesboro Pike into that development. It's the old lines. This new development right here beside the swimming pool, nothing, because it's all new.
They're actually having stuff too.
Are they?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're getting it too then?
It's kind of universal, but your points were very well made. I mean, we're on board with what you're saying.
And they are working on, we're going to, hopefully they'll get some grant money and we get some money to replace. They know their lines, we all know their lines need replaced.
I mean, yeah, I've lived in Emmitsburg all my life, I love Emmitsburg. You guys are doing awesome with the pool. You got the park now. We're definitely going in the right direction with finding things for the kids to do. We're getting the kids off the streets instead of running around, it's definitely our priority. But we got to have clean drinking water if we don't have an alternative. I mean, so all I can do is ask the police fix our lines. I mean, our revenue is going to get down, nobody's going to want to move to Emmitsburg, it's all over the paper. It's making our town look like it's worth nothing. Who would move from anywhere to Emmitsburg if they knew they had to drink out of that?
But I can tell you, because I work in the water and sewer business, it's just not our town.
Oh no, it's everywhere. I know.
It's everyone. We just see it because we're such a small town.
I agree.
The big cities don't see it.
Big cities, I'm sure is even worse, especially with the bigger populations.
I've seen pipes, you can't, big 48, 60-inch pipes that you can hardly walk, you know, see through come to corrosion.
I mean, you know, they're so strict on stuff nowadays, I just can't see why people wouldn't look at the drinking water. I mean, they're worried about where the sewer runoff goes to, they're worried about where everything goes to, but, you know, why isn't somebody stepping in and just putting their foot down and say, no, you can't drink out of that?
Because the testing through MDE is all coming back on their primary levels, everything is coming back within their normal levels. And that's why-
Well, I agree with that, but is that because we're flushing the lines to get them levels?
Can I finish, please? Thank you. So they're coming back all within MDE's normal levels, correct? So that's why there's not been any health concerns from MDA, MDE or EPA. However, it is not aesthetically pleasing at all. I am the first one to agree with that. So MDE is going to be working with us, the county is working with us. So, what was your second question? I'm sorry.
So with the test results, I mean, is that because we're flushing the lines to get the results we need?
We have taken tests all over, from the raw line, from the wells, from the lake, from in-town, and everything has come back within the normal primary levels.
Right.
He also had another question about chlorine.
We have not been adding additional chlorine.
So, I mean, where's that?
And the chlorine levels are all well within the required levels too. So I don't know the answer to the chlorine, that'll have to be discussed with staff, but we're not adding anything additional. My understanding is chlorine wouldn't even, is not used to treat this anyway.
Right. Well, I mean, it's definitely, when you go from, you walk in your bathroom and it kind of burns your eyes, it's definitely there. I mean, not saying anybody, maybe they're not adding it.
But since you're the end of the line and there's no, 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 I don't think the line circulates out there, does it?
We don't, we don't flush Emmitsburg Glass anymore either.
No, I was talking about-
Oh, Waynesboro, okay.
Actually, we flush, we actually flush that every Friday morning now because we get charged when the town has to flush it. So when we come in Friday mornings, we let it run for two hours or we get a charge to flush the hydrant.
Right, but you're still under your minimum.
Well, that's because we're flushing the lines.
It's to keep the residuals in your line.
Right.
I'd be more than happy to discuss that one with you on another day because it's a separate-
That's fine, I'm just, you know, and the bottom line of it guys, I just, I hope we fix it and, you know.
We're working on it. It's going to take a little time to get it all together, but they're going to work on it.
Okay.
And the state and county is all helping now, so.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Mr. President, I have a question. Are we going to let everyone speak first or? Okay. I had a few questions regarding the slide, but I'd gladly let the public speak first. Okay, that's great.
Let the public comment out first.
Sounds great, thank you.
Can you give your name and your address?
Yeah, Bob Ladani, 370 Timber Mill Run in the newer, one of the newer subdivisions in the upper left-hand corner. Moved here in 2005, weren't here very long and my wife calls me at work and says we have brown water. I have lived in more than 20 places, 20,000 people, down to the size of Emmitsburg in four different states. I have never in my life seen water like we get here. And I actually, I guess I have good water compared to previous speaker. I guess I have good water compared to previous speaker. It is normally good. I will tell you that 365 days, three or four days a year, I get really bad water. The rest of it is fine. So I guess that's good. But it's bad enough, I won't drink it, I won't take a shower in it. I won't wash dishes, I will not wash clothes, I won't even wash a car or water my lawn with it. That's not good. And it's been going on for the 15 years that I've been living here. I just replaced my water heater because it is so full of sediment, I can't drain it and clear it anymore. That was two weeks ago, on January 2nd. I got it real bad, really bad. And happened again yesterday. And it got in the hot water heater because my wife took a shower not knowing we had the brown water going on. So I had to drain the tank again. I have gone through hundreds and hundreds of gallons of water wasted and also paid for clearing the stuff out of the system. I have been complaining about it for 15 years. So I am glad it's finally being addressed. And as I spoke with Mr. O'Donnell yesterday, at this point, I would like to be part of the solution, not a complaining part of the problem. I would recommend that we talk to everybody in town and get a history of what's been going on to get a better picture and not just those dots on there. And see more of what's going on. I would be willing to volunteer to go door to door, if that's what, you know, it takes. But I think it's necessary. There's a lot of people that don't call in. I talked to my neighbor across the street. He's a few feet higher than I am, did not have brown water yesterday. My wife talked to my neighbor next door. He's about the same distance above ground. I'm about the lowest in the subdivision. He's got brown water. He never called in. So there's a lot of people that aren't reporting it. I think the problem is a lot worse and may give us a better indication of what's going on and where. As far as being, you know, somewhat helpful to try to figure out what's going on. But, you know, as the previous caller or speaker said, if we, if somebody's got brown water all the time, I can't imagine living here. I've got a couple of pictures if you'd like to see yesterday morning and yesterday evening in my sink. That's, you know, it's up to you if you want to take a look at them. And should we bring in samples? Do you recommend that when we get that kind of water condition, we bring in samples? I know you're testing water, but have you tested the brown water?
Yes, we have. We can't, um, the only way we can test samples is it's done by a certified, uh, somebody that's certified. So one of our staff members would have to come out and collect the sample. They won't, the lab won't take it any other way unless it's a certified person. So here lately, if anybody's called, we've offered to come out and nobody really wants us to come out.
And looking at your dollars for replacing lengths of pipe, it's not that we can just replace the entire town, which really needs to be done, but if we can talk to people and get the worst cases taken care of and come up with a better plan, then just wait and see and more meetings and stuff, we gotta start moving forward on this. It's going to affect, um, you know, who moves up here, who, you know, resale values and a lot of things. I'm done.
Thank you. Do you want to see pictures or?
Sure, if you would, that'd be great.
Mr. Rich, do you have any question?
This is not even that bad.
Didn't we have another speaker?
No, right.
I don't think we have another speaker. Has everyone spoken and needed to speak?
Everyone's cleared up.
Okay.
I was just jumping in. I would like to talk about Senator Huff, the offer that he presented us. What exactly did he offer and are we taking him up on that offer?
Yeah, I answered him that day and told him any assistance that his office could provide would be greatly appreciated. And I think they were reaching out directly to MDE was what their offer was going to be.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything else since then though.
Okay.
But MDE has been in contact with us, so it may have worked.
There's one more question. We talked about the tuberculation in the lines and one way to treat that was the orthophosphate.
Correct.
How much? Couple of questions, this is a multi-part question. To treat the lines, how much of this orthophosphate will we need?
That I don't know. That's something that we're hoping to be able to, and then Dan can come up and answer that probably better than I can. But we're also waiting for the results from the county. They're maybe speculating a combination of pH in this orthophosphate. But Dan, if you want.
Dan, can you come up here to the mic so we can hear you?
We know how much you love to speak in public, that's why we did it.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, it would probably be like a 55 gallon drum and we would feed it neat right out of the drum, right into the line going into the storage tank. Now, we would use a small amount over a long period of time in conjunction with our pH control, which will help coat the turbacles so they won't break loose like they've been doing. So something has changed and we're trying to figure out what has changed in our water. So it, it obviously, we have, we haven't had any really large complaints like this for the last 15 years.
Since DePaul Street.
Now all of a sudden, it's every week. And something has changed and we're working on trying to find what has changed. Yeah, we just have to have time to find it. So replacing the lines would definitely do it.
Yeah.
But like you said, we can't replace the whole town all at once.
Right, I have another question. The line coming from the mountain down, the main line, is it all before 50s?
Coming from?
From the, from our plant down to town.
I believe that was put in around 1960, when they built the new plant. Uh, that is cement lined cast iron. And every time, every time we broke it open for a leak or anything, it looked in good shape. I mean, it's not growing in that line that I'm aware of, but the velocity coming to town, there could be a pocket laying somewhere. And when we get these big spikes, it taints that whole line coming down. The corrosion control would recode that again and, and hold it in place. But you have to find it first. I mean, that's, that's a good indication. I mean, it's spread out over in Brookfield and it's spread out down Main Street. I mean, we really flushed that line twice and got it as clean as we could right at the time. I mean, I flushed 500,000 gallons compared to hundreds of gallons that last time we flushed in the middle of December. And it was clean when we left.
Now, I have another question. The main line from, from, from the, um, town limits down Main Street, east and west, that's before the, is that's in the 80s or 90s?
That should be when they did the Main Street project. Mid 80s, that was before.
Mid to late 80s.
Emmett Gardens is new.
Emmett Gardens is new.
Saddle Hill is new. South Gate is new.
Yes.
South Seton is new.
Yes.
Brookfield and Pembroke are newer.
Newer, yes.
Uh, North Gate also is in the 80s, I believe. The only lines that are before 50s is North Seton, DePaul Street.
Waynesboro Pike.
Waynesboro Pike. I mean, that, if he's correct, that line is in bad shape.
So, um,
We're working on that right now.
The Commissioner Rich, you asked about the orthophosphate. Wasn't the, the plant designed, didn't it have a feeder initially when it was constructed?
Yes, it was designed to use what they call hexametaphosphate, which is an orthophosphate. It's just a a different, a little bit different mixture. I mean, there's probably a million different configurations of it. And we opted to use the soda ash control because it was a little bit cheaper, a little bit easier. And it's worked since 2000. When we first started raising the pH in 2004, we were running a pH in town of 69, 70. And when we increased it, we were giving out filters weekly. We would even give the filter housings out to people and they could install them and we would replace the filters. That all went away in about a year. Until just recently. And now, now we're getting another, it doesn't appear like we have a major leak except under Waynesboro Road.
And then track, we got something on track road also, right?
Yeah, we're thinking that it's coming from that. It's leaking down under the road bed and then surfacing at track road. What we think is going on are best indications, the leak detection and all that.
So basically, what, what Dan's seeing in his numbers and our initial discussion with the county is something has changed with the water. What it is, that's what the county's going to work on, MDE's going to work on. So you have, as we move forward, you have short-term plans and long-term plans. Replacing the water lines is the long-term plan. Because unfortunately, trying to get funding through USDA and MDE, if you apply today, you're looking at two years out, even if it's loans. So, um, what we can do is start looking at, you know, we have our audit presentation next, next meeting to see where the water fund sits. Because the water fund has been operating in a deficit for several years now. Where we can find some money to start making the small, maybe the smaller changes, like the track road one in the, in the smaller section of Waynesboro. But then also look at these other things, which I was really hoping to have the counties report by tonight. Unfortunately, I talked to them on the phone today and they just couldn't get it done on the short turnaround. Is they're going to help us develop some plans, short-term and long-term, on what we can do going forward. Um, there's going to be some equipment that we think we need that I'll be bringing to the board, hopefully to approve, to help with the function of the water plant and testing on our end. Because we don't have as much capability of testing and that's why we have to either send it out to the county or to Catoctin Labs because we don't have it all in-house. We'd like to have some more testing and ability to do some of our own indexes in-house.
Can I just, sorry, can I just follow up on one more thing? Because we were talking about that orthophosphate, you mentioned soda ash. So I, so, am I saying that right?
Soda ash is a glorified baking soda.
Okay, so we were, we were adding, I remember, I guess about two years ago, we, um, we had a presentation regarding the, um, the algae, the
The algae sonic.
They're on the lake and it was, by putting that in, it was going to significantly decrease the amount of money we were spending on chemicals. Are we cutting back on adding this soda ash to the line right now that could possibly?
No, actually, we're increasing it.
You're increasing it? Okay.
Increasing the level. Just to rule that current soda out.
Alright. I was just trying to think if we were cutting back.
We may not be able to get it stable with just the soda ash right now. Like I said, for 15 years, it was great. We very rarely had.
It's a real eye-opener tonight though. I had no idea that the lines look like that.
Oh, yeah. Now, now, see that, that line that was all turbocled up inside, that's been like that since, since 2004.
Okay.
Okay, now what we did with soda ash is we put a light coating on that so that stuff doesn't leak out. A little chunk of that, like that, will taint thousands of gallons before it dissolves and goes away, where we flush it out. And if you got a half a mile pipe like that, imagine that when you pull a high velocity through it, it's going to send some brown water around.
Mr. Davis?
I really don't have anything for you, Dan. Just going to make a couple of comments.
I'll comment if you want me to comment back.
We've got to make this our number one priority. We have to change the way we're doing business. If it means stopping some projects that we have that we want to do. I know we get grants and we get things for parks and rec and things like that. But a grant, we still got to put money out there. Right now, we can't afford to be spending money on anything but getting these people's water right. And, uh, it's an emergency. It's a state of emergency. You know, we got a man back there with kids that, you know, he can't take a bath, he can't do anything with it. So we've got to change our, our way of thinking and come up with another business plan. You know, it was, it was all nice to, to put $500,000 into the swimming pool a couple of years ago, but look what that would have done for how much water line we could have fixed. So that's, and that was one of the platforms that I ran on. I knew that the infrastructure was getting bad and I'm going to keep the promise to the people that put me here that we're going to get that fixed one way or the other. And we have to find a way, whether we have to take out a loan, whether we have to stop projects, we have to do whatever. I mean, our staff's taking a beating out there, there's nothing they can do about those water lines looking that bad. We just didn't have our priorities straight and not blaming this council, but we didn't have our priorities straight back. However, many other councils haven't done anything. There hasn't been a plan in place to, to take care of this over the years.
Right. Well, all the towns are doing it. We have replaced everything except for the North Seton and Waynesboro Park, but that's where we know the new developments.
The problem is, Waynesboro Pike has got the bad water and correct me guys if I'm wrong, but that goes in, eventually goes into Brookfield, correct? That bad water line at Waynesboro Pike, does that go in the back way to?
It's all tied together.
Yeah. So that's why they're, is that why they're probably getting the worst of it? Yeah, so we, we just got to, got to do something. Mayor, I don't know what the answer is, but I guess that's why you get paid the big bucks.
So what you have to do is you have to start looking at your water and your sewer fund. As you'll, you know, we have the audit presentation on the 3rd and she'll explain to you the difference, the separation of your general fund, which was how we do everything else in town. And then your water and sewer fund is, they're too separate, they can't co-mingle. So what we need to do is how do you build up your water fund to pay for some of these? Or as you, collectively as the board, you start reaching out to your elected officials. Because I just read in the paper where they're trying to get money for infrastructure for Brunswick and Middletown and Newmarket, but I didn't see Emmitsburg mentioned. We need help too. So staff can only do so much, but we need your help reaching out to other agencies. The mayor does a really good job of it to help us get the funding for it. And we need more grants than we need loans because ultimately, when you get loans, it falls back on you, on the taxpayers to repay these loans. So, um, that needs to be, how do you build up your water fund? How do you get the money to fund this?
Is there, and you guys are going to tell me with this one, is there a reason we've been operating at a deficit for the last several years with the water fund?
The water rates have, and I certainly by no means do I say this, the water rates were never raised from 2008 and up. They did raise for higher end users and then your higher end users stopped using water. So your revenue that's coming in is less than what the expenses are to run the water plant and to provide the water to the town. And so that's why it's operating in a deficit.
Part of the thinking behind this was during the time when the economy was the hardest in the Great Recession, we were trying to keep expenses for the community stable as opposed to increase them. That was one part. The other part was funding, I suspect, and I'm hypothesizing here, it was anticipated from new development that didn't materialize or that dried up. The funding of tap fees and related fees didn't happen. So it's sort of an echo of those decisions that where we tried to address the immediate needs and the long-term needs to kind of keep, to keep things stable. However, on the other side of the issue, I think the preceding boards were very mindful of the need and money had been set aside for the relining. But I don't think any of us anticipated the relining of the sections that have been done and that are ongoing. The, and I can't speak for individuals on the boards in the past, but I'll, I'll provide this thought from myself. My view was we hadn't seen any crisis coming. And truthfully, I was not aware of the nature of what was there on DePaul Street nor on Waynesboro Pike because nothing had brought this to the fore. You know, we'd heard about brown water occasionally and I know individuals, especially Mr. Ladani, had shared that. But we hadn't seen But we hadn't seen the, for lack of a better term, the, the quality so poor, like with the dark, dark water. And we hadn't seen the pervasive nature of it like we see now. This is like an extraordinary circumstance from, compared to where the baseline of the past, like, eight years had been. So moving forward, I would fully agree with you that this is our number-one priority. I think town staff and staff in the field has absolutely felt that. And I think, you know, I, I'm very interested in learning if, when we sit with the county again, we can come up with a comprehensive plan, and I know staff will weigh in on prioritizing where we have to make our immediate spending happen. The other part is, you know, we do have, for lack of a better description, a modest strategic reserve. And if a fund transfer is necessitated, and it sure sounds like it to me, that's something that we have to very seriously consider as a board. The other piece is, we will see very likely water rates increase in the future. And I ask staff for consideration, would there be merit to setting money aside for another staff person or to enhance a staff person's ability to pursue grant funding full-time? I, I, I'm not a fan of outsourcing that pursuit. I'd like to see it in-house so we can fine-tune it. And that's something I think town staff would wanna, you know, weigh in on it, if not tonight, at a better time. I don't wanna put anybody on the hot seat here. But I think what we really need is, and Mr. Davis, I don't mean to echo you too much, is a comprehensive plan prioritizing where the greatest needs are and address them, you know, post haste, so.
Well, that is definitely our hope with the county, and I think that's their intention also. So, like I said, we were hoping to have everything from them for tonight's meeting. I had a brief phone call with them, and that's their intention, is their draft report is gonna set forth plans and sit down with staff and go over them and kind of come together with what we think, both parties, the best way to approach this is. And then, you know, we'll have MDE weigh in if and when they come to take those samples. But that's the plan.
Another, another question?
Yes, go ahead.
Do we, do we have enough reserve money that we could spend $300,000 to take care of that track road area? Because that could take care of that whole topside problem there. That would get rid of half of our red.
We, we are gonna do the Waynesboro Pike one, and the, the section of track road that we can do right now is only about $6,800 that we're gonna do that. Unfortunately, we can't do that till the weather's warmer, because you have to lay a temporary line. You don't have $300,000 reserves in your water. This would be a question for Michelle when they do the audit. She is much more familiar with the intricacies of fund transfers inside and outside of the water fund, because the general fund and the water fund stay separate. If there's transfers that can be done out of the operating budget, those are questions for her that I would feel more comfortable that she answers, so I don't misspeak.
Because the last thing I'd wanna do is raise people's water rates and give them, still give them dirty water.
Correct.
I mean, I think that's, you all, whoever's up for the next election, you might be gone.
Question is.
But I will.
We're all temps here, yeah, yeah, I understand, I do.
One thing that I will comment, though, is USDA typically looks at your rates and your ability to pay back loans. That's why the sewer rates went up when the new sewer plant was built. So that is, unfortunately, could be a downside of getting loans and grants from USDA. I'm not saying that it would happen, but that's just something to keep in the back of your mind, because it happened when they built the new sewer plant.
Yeah, we had to have two, we raised them twice.
Yes.
Another decision-making factor in that, though, with them, if I understand it correctly, is, you know, the concrete nature of the issue.
Right.
This is a real issue, and we have absolute empirical evidence that it exists. So I would anticipate them being able to kinda balance their judgment.
Well, that typically comes from MDE. If MDE sends notices out or, or issues a statement or a notice, then USDA always takes that in consideration, and so does MDE, so.
And so.
We're not at that point from MDE or USDA yet, because like I said, this, all the testing's come back. But we'll see what happens when they come out and sit down with staff. Maybe they will. I mean, it's in our, it's in our best interest if they do issue something, because it does help us with funding.
What type of endorsement would you need from the board for that meeting? Would you want us to take a vote to say we endorse X? I mean, what action can we do on our part to give you strength in, you know, moving forward on this?
For?
For funding?
For funding?
I mean, for, for making their threshold for grant access.
Oh, we can start, I've already reached out to USDA, and I told her I'd be in contact tomorrow after this meeting, and we can start the wheels moving, and she's, she's great to work with. She's currently working with the pump station and the clarifier. So if it's out there, she's gonna help us get it.
Okay.
Do you know if they have emergency funding for that?
USDA? I don't know.
Or MDE?
I don't know.
Maybe when you have their meetings, you can ask if they have some emergency funding? Or, and also the, is it Senator?
Senator Huff.
Senator Huff, if, if you can.
Well, to me, reaching out to your delegates is better served coming from the mayor or the commissioners as opposed to your town manager.
Yeah, 'cause we talked about it when they had that reserve fund for the hotel money, and there was five million there, and they said they were looking for projects, but I got a feeling it's already been.
That was the article I read, and we were not named in that article.
Yeah, well, yeah, we had talked about it here at one of the meetings. And, and just one more, the last thing I've got, this is the second citizen that I heard that is willing to, to work and, and help us with this project. And I would like to see us put a citizens' work group together. Mr. and Mrs. Berger up in Brookfield also has offered to put a citizens' work group together to help do research and help do some of the legwork that maybe staff doesn't have time to do. And I spoke to another gentleman that works for the city of Rockville, who does the water stuff. He said he's willing to, to sit and try to help with anything. So I think a citizens' work group might be a good thing for us. That's all I got.
Any question?
Mr. Burns?
Do you know the extent of the testing that the county and MDE are doing versus what the town has done in the past? I know there's been, you know, questions on what the town has tested as far as the water quality versus what the county and MDE, are they coming in and testing the exact same things that we have in the past? Or is there's a lot more extensive?
I don't know exactly. They didn't really tell me what they were testing. I know they were gonna test, they tested some brown water, determine what actually the makeup of the brown water is. I know they're testing for iron and magnes. That is something that we don't have the ability to test for in-house as of right now. What MDE's intentions are, I don't know. I don't know exactly what Frederick County tested for outside of those three.
Can we assume that they're gonna do more extensive testing than we have in the past, or?
I don't, I don't know. I would think, I would think so, without putting words in their mouth, but I would think they would, because they're checking a lot of different indexes and, and levels. So I would imagine that we'll get some more information than what we get just in-house.
You have a question? Mr. Wood?
Would, would, I'd ask my fellow commissioners here, are we going to send letters separately to our delegates? Or are we collectively doing it as, as a unit?
Mr. Mayor, what would you like?
We could, it's, it's nice to get a note from everybody, the more notes you get. So I'd suggest we could pretty much standardize something for y'all to sign, but it'd be nice to get one from, the more the mayor. So it'd be really good.
That, I have no problem with that.
Excuse me?
Mr. Wood?
I just, one more question. I know, I, I'm pretty sure we discussed this before, so just for clarification. When it comes to our town budget and the two funds, the general fund and then the water fund, why are they separate?
State, they're state, state law accounting prin, state accounting principles. It's called GASP.
And every municipality in Maryland must abide by this?
Yes.
Do any not abide by it, and what are the repercussions if you don't?
I don't know. That's a question for Michelle. I'm sure there's a lot, heavy fines and penalties involved.
No, I, seriously, I want, I wanna find out.
Well, the way you have to think about it is, so your general fund, all the money that comes in is monies that's collected from income tax, property tax, revenues, commercial revenues, et cetera. And so that money's designated to basically take care of the town. Your water and sewer fund is like your checking account. All that money, when people come in and pay for their water and sewer bills, they expect that money that they're paying for water and sewer to be put solely to water and sewer. So that's why, that's just the simple way this, to look at it. I'm sure there's more intricacies involved than I'm aware of, and that's why I would defer to Michelle. Maybe there is something that I'm not aware of, that there's something that we could do, but right now I'm.
A deposit into that checking account.
A budget transfer of an appropriate source.
The other fund. Do we have, I, I have two questions. Do we have, I don't have the budget in front of me, but I can't remember. Do we have reserves in our general fund? Do you know about how much?
We have, we have general fund, and then we have our fund two, our capital improvement projects.
Can we transfer from general to capital improvements?
You can, you can transfer from general fund to capital improvements, but capital improvements are not water and sewer.
Can we put a line item for water lines?
Not in your fund two. They're, it's completely separate. And if, they're completely separate, because your fund two, your fund two is funded by your fund one general fund. It's your, basically, your excesses from each year are put into that for projects within the town. Your water and sewer is solely funded by your revenues that you get in and any loans and any grants.
But I have another question, too. Can we have the lawyer here also? Our town attorney, I mean, because I have a question for emergency. This is emergency. I don't know, legally do it if we can. We'd have to have a lawyer, wouldn't we? Our, our town attorney here, to ask if we, how can we use, if we have funds?
That's your auditor. That's, that wouldn't be your attorney. That would be your auditor. She'll be here.
That would be, I mean, is it legal for us to do?
Mr. Sweeney, are you looking for a threshold to determine what is, like, a state of emergency for our, for our purposes? Is that what you're asking? Okay, so.
Then we create a state of emergency for, in our, in our town municipality to correct the pipes that are damaged.
Right now, you do not have in your code, and that's something Matty and I are working on. You don't have a section in your code for emergency expenses.
And?
Yeah, I don't have a copy of the code here. Is there anything written in our code who can declare a Emmitsburg state of emergency? Would that fall under the mayor?
I, yes, it would, but we don't have anything state of emergency outside of an actual state of emergency like fire, flood, threats, things of that nature. That's under your emergency preparedness plan. Budget question, I mean, these, these questions about the budget and everything, I, I'm doing my best to answer them, but I would rather defer to Michelle, because there maybe is something that I'm missing. I don't think so, but she is the expert.
Mr. Sweeney, may I ask a question? Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For the letter to our representatives, will you be directing staff to create a draft? So we have a boilerplate to work from?
Yes.
And then from there, we'll see that draft and we'll go forward on our end?
Right.
Is that the expectation on your part?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, sir.
When would that be ready?
If you started now.
If I don't go home.
I can start typing up something myself. I, I have no problem with that. If someone wants to review it, then.
Yeah, Friday, Monday at the latest. Let's say Monday at the latest.
I mean, my only concern is being, not on the boilerplate piece, but just making sure we are contacting all of our representatives, state and federal. So I know you've got the, the most current list.
So you have the six delegates and then the two state senators. All emails are available online. So you have Carol Krim, Karen Young, Ken Kerr, Dan Cox, Sila Birdie, and Jesse Pippi. So those would be our six direct contacts, correct?
An email's wonderful. A hard copy letter is definitely more substantial. The other piece I'd suggest is, if we're using a boilerplate, we, we're not bound to it, but I think a consistency of our message, you know, we have a critical situation, we need to modify this, we need your assistance. Please render, you know, as best, and we will do whatever we need to do to cooperate for the greater interest of our community. You know, something akin to that. But emails are good. I just firmly believe a hard copy letter on top of that is our best, is our best route of action.
If you were only receiving, would, would it mean that much difference to you if you got six letters instead of one with just, with everybody's signature on it?
I think so. I think just the actual physical weight.
I'd get mad. I'd just, you know, I'd start chucking them. I'm gonna tell you what I would do with them. Here comes another one, I'd chuck it. But if I saw had one with one voice and, and all six signatures, I'm good with doing whatever, because somebody else.
Stagger them, maybe, that would jot their memory.
But, I want it to be politically correct.
Is that why you're not answering my email? No, I'm, I'm making that up, by the way.
It'll be unique.
Oh, it'll be unique, alright.
Some kind of paper signed by citizens of the town, too, if you go, maybe go around and get signatures.
Yeah. Yeah, and just to let you all know, some of the things, we hear you loud and clear, and some of the things that we run into the problem with, I was here a couple of weeks ago. Town staff got a phone call from a lady, and she was just going off. My water's been brown for a month, and I can't eat, drink. I want somebody now. Well, we surprised her. I went. Within two minutes, I was knocking on her door. Who are you? I'm here to see your brown water. Well, it's not brown right now. I said, no, 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 it was two minutes ago. And it's been brown for 30 days. You just told, you know, I was there when you, you know. Well, it's not brown right now, though. Yeah, so that's what we're dealing with. We're dealing with people from Gettysburg, who doesn't have a dog in the fight, but they, they wanna give us their, their two cents worth. And so, so we, we do hear you, but there's a whole lot of obstacles. The, the surge we got the other night, it set the fire alarm off at its sleep-in. So now, it affected the fire department. And yes, I was in bed. I had to get up. And, but, you know, so it's, it's having a big effect on everybody, and we don't understand. You, you gotta stick with us, but we are gonna start to move.
Yes.
We, I, I promise you, and I'd still like to see that committee, because I think we have some experts out here in the community that could take some of this work off staff and, and have contacts at other places.
So, who do you want to head the committee? Do you wanna do it through the liaison for the, through the liaison?
Sure, yeah, I don't, I don't care who does it.
Would you like to do that, Mr. Burns?
I can.
I know we have a couple of names. We had the gentleman tonight, and I think we all got the letter from, from the Burgers.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
There's an interest in this committee, Water Quality Pro Tem Committee, or whatever, however we would like to name it. Do we have your support in pursuing this? So we can create it, the goal of the committee, as I understand it, would be research and supporting town staff, but not acting on behalf of the town?
No, not at all.
Okay, so is that, is that your intent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
Excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, if we could receive your endorsement for that, I think the board might make a, a motion, but I just, would you be willing to support that?
We have to kinda pull it together from this side, maybe let the tide come in, let it roll back to you. What we can put together that might get a description of what, what you want and talk, talk with.
So if we were to frame it with staff?
I don't want to bring another burden on the staff.
Understood, understood.
But they're gonna do it, but they're, you know, we just wanna find, you know.
It's better served as an admin business, or action item at your February meeting. And that way, you can actually take a vote on it and.
We'll have some stuff.
Maybe you can get your members all for the committee then, or whoever wants to be, I mean, you think should be on the committee.
So we can create a framework for the committee by that time, and it's realistic. And then as a board, we would give it consideration. Mr. Davis, would that serve what you're trying to get after?
I'm okay, but I'm, I'm getting tired of kicking the can down the road. I'm gonna tell you right in front, and just, you know, and this isn't meant directly at anybody.
No, I understand, it's, it.
You know, we got another two weeks, another month. You know, we got another two weeks, another month, another month, and then we got, next thing you say, another two years of work, you can get a grant, well, you know, they're only gonna be patient with us for so long.
Correct, and then, right.
With the order here, we can find out.
No, I was just gonna ask, Commissioner Burns, you're, you're willing to chair that? I mean, you can't do it on your own.
No, I can't.
No, so, I mean, I'll help out anyway.
I think we need to figure out what the structure of it is first, and what, what we're trying to accomplish before we gung ho, go into this blind.
Mr. Davis, as a thought, you might wanna consider organizing the group, like bringing, just contacting parties if you're inclined, and that way, when the meeting happens, I can only, I would speculate there'd be approval for it. And maybe the, the membership could move forward, like, now, organizing, you know, what the intent is, like the research and support, but at the same time, it gets, it would be formalized at the town meeting, at the, sorry, at the February town meeting.
Okay, yeah, I'll give, I'll give the names that I have, the people that showed an interest. And just one last thing, we've gotta try to figure out some way to stimulate our growth, because that's the problem. Our funds aren't coming in like we're supposed to, and there's something that stopped that, so we gotta do something to stimulate the growth to start to get money, and we did, we tried to do it with the business side of it, now I think we better, better look back at the residential side and see what we gotta do. I don't know what that is, this is all new to me.
Yeah. Step one.
Any other questions, Mr. Taylor?
Sir, one more, and I'll be super quick, and this might be an easy one. I know we've dealt with some pretty heavy issues. The water tank truck issue, the question is, if someone is pulling water, though, in the long term, it's not the answer, Mr. Hubert, in respect to what you said, I concur, but in the short term, that hammer effect that we're seeing is an issue. Should someone see a water tanker truck, what is best? Calling town office directly, taking a photograph? What would be best?
Both.
Okay.
And we have had some people call in, we've had people send pictures, ultimately, it's been our contractors doing work for us.
Okay.
But, you know, anything suspicious, you know, you can always call the deputies, if you see something, you know, late at night, and it's suspicious, you know, somebody's, you know, you should always call if something's suspicious.
Certainly, okay.
You know, pictures, tag numbers, descriptions.
But at this point in time, you know, calling 911, or are we calling the deputy advisory number? Is it...
The advisory number.
Okay, okay.
But even, even if you don't get anybody, if you get that tag number, you get the descriptions, you get the whole nine yards, you know, that's, you know...
It's actionable.
That's actionable, yeah, very much so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burns?
There's no limit, one of those.
Can we invite Mr. Ladani up?
Yeah, who had a question?
When this chart started, it says as of, how far back does it go?
Since the end of October.
Of 19?
Yes, when we started getting the bulk of complaints.
When you had it before, you said you had it, what, a couple, here and there, through the year, you know?
Three or four times each year since 2005.
But not...
It's been more.
Okay.
And it clears up within the day.
And that would be around the time that town was probably flushing the hydrants.
Yeah, that's probably when they flushed the hydrants, about four times a year quarterly, is that when you flushed?
Twice.
Twice?
Twice a year.
Eric, come on up here.
So, the stuff that was, I forget which thing, Dan was talking about putting in our lines. I mean, I would imagine if it's that, if it's for that, is that able to be, you know, is it safe to be drinking also? As a quick fix?
Yeah, they, he only puts, well, he can answer the question, but I think they only put so much in at a time, a little bit.
The county and MDE, it's approved usage in water, that is one of the possible recommendations from the county.
Okay.
And the, you can ask him about the chlorine, too, why is it higher at your end? You can help, be able to answer that.
We get three chlorine residuals every day around town. Okay, we get one at our storage tank, one on the 23 East A Street, and we also get one at our pump station, because it's a constant flow of our water and through our one sewer network. Our chlorine, our chlorine in town have a 0.9 to a 1.2 sometimes. At our storage tank, we try to hold around a 1.2, 1.3, because the town against the town agrees a little bit, because chlorine doesn't stay in the line for a... Now, the limit is four milligram per liter. It's almost like swimming pool. I have never kept it that high in my 25 years here. The reason that you need chlorine is for pathogens in the water, so we don't get some other sickness, cholera, dysentery, all the good stuff to get through. And 90% of the time, when you smell so much chlorine, you need more, you need more chlorine. Now, that could be reacting, if you have it so high in your line, that could be reacting with the rust in that line. I mean, I can come out and grab a sample and tell you exactly where it is. I don't need to get into the house, I can grab it right out of here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're more than welcome, I got two spigots, you're more than welcome, anytime you'd like.
Yeah, let you know where it is.
Appreciate it.
I guarantee it's gonna be a right around one of them.
Oh, you seem, you seem very knowledgeable. I mean, I'm sure you know exactly what you're doing, I just, you know, I wanted to bring that on.
Was there other question, breaking the ortho boss made?
What's that?
Was the other question, breaking the ortho boss made?
Yeah.
That's all regulated by this thing, okay? It's the same thing with the chlorine, you're only gonna be allowed to put in so much, 70 milligram per liter, it's gonna be a very low dose, and it's gonna take a long time to curate the pipes, I guess, so it's not gonna be like, like things like that.
Like a year-long time, or...
We will see a difference in the near future. We need to wait for the results for a corrosivity test, one of the tests that the county is going for, is the corrosiveness of our water. And we will get some testing equipment, so we can do that, so we can adjust it up or down, we never had this problem before.
Well, I mean, obviously, age is gonna cause problems, you know, if we're talking 1960, that's, we say we haven't had a problem in 15 years, chances are, as the age is getting to it, I would imagine. But, thank you for answering questions on the chlorine and everything. So, one thing you mentioned that it would cost about $300,000 to do that, roughly, and you were saying, do we have any, you know, emergency fund? And then you guys got talking about transfer funds. I mean, you know, I'm not, I don't know exactly how it all works, but, you know, every, every budget has change orders or some kind of transfer you can make. I would imagine, hopefully you guys can all put your heads together, and the person you was talking about, hopefully, you know, she can figure something out. But one thing I was wondering, you know, so, I mean, Emmitsburg does own lots and lots of land that we're not using, and we're paying taxes on it, so is it possible to unload some of that and use it for our emergency fund here? I mean, we got up at Rainbow Lake, the Duck Ponds, hundreds of acres that was donated, that maybe we could use for advantage, instead of just letting it sit, instead of paying for it. You know, I mean, again, I don't know the budget aspect of it, but it's just a possibility, you know? Just kind of seems useless to have land sitting around, we're not using, and we're paying taxes on, if we have a state of emergency going on, but, you know...
That land on the mountain was given to us with the stipulation that we could not use it for anything else but our watershed.
That was.
No building, we couldn't sell for, for a building or anything.
Even like a...
Because they gave it to us, we didn't have to pay for it.
I mean, even in a state of emergency type of deal?
See, that's, we have attorneys for it and stuff like that, so that's out of my league.
I believe the term perpetuity was used.
It's kind of airtight on that part of it, but there are, there are properties the town owns that we could liquidate, and I think there's some logic to that, but the question is, process, right now, we're selling a house on...
South Seaton.
South Seaton, and the process has been eye-opening, it's just, it's just, it's not been a simple process, I'll just say it that way, but definitely an innovative idea, worth, worth consideration.
I mean, you know, the home value around here is somewhat high, Frederick County, so a couple homes sold could be one fix, and, you know, like any savings account, every little bit adds up, so, you know, just thought I'd throw that out there, I'm sure y'all thought about it before, though. I appreciate all you guys trying your best to help us out here.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you for coming in.
Yep. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, you have to come up here and give your name and your, your address, and can you sign this paper for me, please? Before you do that?
It's a sign-in sheet for...
It's just a sign-in sheet for speaking. I wanna make sure everybody's heard.
Good news comments?
Yes.
Our comments?
Yeah, any good news comments?
Go ahead, just give your name and your address.
My name is Debbie Ball, and it's 318 Mountaineer's Way. So my question is, when you guys were referring to how long it would take to get the grants for the funding, I think you said could be two years? So, is there any way that you guys can come up with, before maybe another water meeting or the next meeting, a real timeline that's on this PowerPoint, that's showing us, like, I know there's possibilities that need to be explored, obviously, to come up with emergency funds and things like that, but if we could see a timeline that's showing us something before the two years, because obviously, two years is unacceptable, so...
We're working on that, waiting on Frederick County and the, and the state to get back with this, with maybe some funding ideas, and we're trying to do the best we can. Staff's gonna be working on it every day, so...
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, I know you guys are working on it, and I get it, and you're putting effort out there, and we all appreciate that, it's just, when you hear a number like two years, when you're dealing with kids that have rashes, and they can't take baths, I mean, that's like minute-to-minute life right here, I mean, two years is not an acceptable number, so...
No, agree. I, I think that was in reference to pursuing, pursuing additional grants that, I think that number was just thrown out, that it takes longer, but the quick fix now, the money that we're looking at now, we're looking at potentially transferring, if possible, within our budget, and getting bunny from Frederick County, state, wherever, sooner rather than later, but I don't, I don't think...
Am I incorrect, though, to, when you guys are saying that, though, is it, that's kind of like a patch job, though, right, just here and there where we see it? I mean, ultimately, everything needs to be replaced.
Yeah.
So...
The whole line, if we go for it, we'll do the whole one piece, we won't skip, hopefully. The only lines that shouldn't need to be replaced is the three chapin, Woodsboro Park, North Seaton, and DePaul, and DePaul Street, though the only lines have, that have not been replaced. Within the, the lining time, and, and before the 650s, they, before the 60s, they didn't put any linings in the pipes, concrete linings, and that's why they corrode like that on the inside.
Okay.
So, and then, all the new pipes now, they go to plastics, they're, they're using PVC for everything now, so they don't have any of that inside anymore.
So you guys are saying that, even where we have the new lines coming from the old?
Or they call it C900 pipes, which are, are heavy-duty plastic, which will not corrode at all, so, maybe.
Sorry, if we jump in on something?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Davis, is that right?
Go ahead.
Okay, all right. To your last question about where the issues are coming from, it seems most logical that, yes, there are old pipes, and that's where the issues are coming from regarding the discolored water, but we don't have total evidence of that, and what we're doing is, we're trying to gather with even more expert folks and their expertise, applying that to what's going on, and that's what the testing is, and that's where the county is going to be helpful to us, and potentially the state, the Maryland Department of Environment, when we talk about the MDE, so, I'm not gonna say we're partnering with them, but we are working with them. The process that you're talking about, like a formal timeline?
Yeah.
In discussion from hearing from staff, what we've heard tonight, and what you've heard from tonight, is we're looking to create a comprehensive plan that would identify, you know, the sequencing of priorities of how to knock them out, like creating a punch list to get it done.
Mm-hmm.
Our highest priority in the most immediate moment is getting rid of the brown water. The long-term fix is a separate thing, and that's, I think, where we were talking about, the two-year grant for the longer sections to be repaired.
Yeah.
And I think you get that, I'm not trying to, you know...
Right, no, I, I get that, but...
Redundant.
Ultimately, it all needs to be done.
Correct. The immediate fix to the brown water that we're dealing with relates to the patches. That's what, that's what our, our plan is at this moment. If we hear otherwise, however, we're gonna have to pivot and address those issues also, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah.
And we'll hear that information from, you know, both our professional staff and outside professional staff, so, if that gives you a sense of organization, a formal timeline, I think once we have all the, I can't say all the pieces, when we have the bulk of pieces in place, I think we'll have a reliable timeline.
Mm-hmm.
We can give you conjecture and hypothesis right now, but we just don't have enough specific information to say, absolutely, this is, this is it, and that's why we're eliminating, like, these other possibilities.
Right.
And, you know, it's, I, I fully understand, you know, parent of three, and, you know, it's minute-to-minute getting the household to, you know, to bed, to the morning, to, and all those pieces, I'm, I'm with you.
Yeah.
The other side of it, though, is on, on the management piece on our end, we are relying on the absolute expertise of professional town staff, you know, this is 40 to 60 years of expertise here in the room, and on the field side, you, you have, you know, town staff in the office managing the process, so, a concrete, absolute timeline, I can't say that in the next meeting, it's a realistic expectation, that you're gonna see a precise timeline that we're gonna be bound to, but I think we can give you a reasonable timeline, you know, a hypothetical on it.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I feel like it's the town's number one priority, like everyone's saying at this point, so, I feel like you guys should be able to come up with a concrete timeline now, I get that you're still bringing in information, but once you have that information, I feel like the town people need to see that.
Oh, absolutely.
Because, you know, it's just disheartening to live here right now.
And I, I apologize, I, just to reiterate, we're not going to pursue, I'm pretty confident in stating that we're not gonna pursue fixing everything 100% grant, we can't. Two weeks, about two weeks from now, first Monday, meeting, town meeting, we have our audit, from our financial auditors, and that's where we're gonna be asking the questions about transferring these funds, if it's possible, why can't we do it a certain way?
Mm-hmm.
What, what can we do?
For bigger repairs.
For, for bigger repairs.
Yeah.
And then, go from there, and you're absolutely right, any, any timeline, anything that we discover, needs to be made public, and everyone needs to be made aware of what's going on.
And another thing, too, I mean, in this, you know, very moment right now, like, is it possible that the town can come up with that emergency funding to give people water filters, so that we can have the clean water right now? I mean, is that a possibility, that we can get water filters to people? Of some fashion, that, you know, I mean, something, it's like, you know...
I don't know that we can do that, and that's, that's a discussion that we're gonna have to have, like, right now, but, I know we've provided, like, alternate sources, like we brought water to households, I know that doesn't satisfy the whole household.
Right, but that, I mean, you know, for like bathing and stuff, I mean, yeah, obviously, it's possible, that if you had to fill up a bathtub with gallons and jugs of water, you'd do it if you're in that kind of situation, but it would be more resourceful to provide a water filter than buying gallons and jugs of, you know...
Correct, correct.
Mr. Dave?
He's not there.
Oh, no, go ahead. I promised I was done for the night.
We've done that before, Dan, when we did DePaul Street, we were providing, were we providing filters for them, or did we, in the, back in the early 2000s? We were replacing filters, every, is that what you said when you was up here before? I couldn't, I mean, I'm trying to think back.
Yes, we did that in the past, fewer elements.
Is that, people already had filters already, we were just replacing?
I understand.
That we know of.
That would be up to, to you all.
I don't know how much it costs to put filters on the homes, cause I don't have one on mine.
Now, the other part of it, we, there, there were conversations related to this with the town's attorney, and the town's attorney weighed in on this and advised not to move in that direction. Now, I haven't heard the rationale from the attorney based on, like, just that, that information. But again, it's the idea of, and, and I hate to use this phrase, just, you know, allocation of resources. We have a finite quantity right now, and we're trying to do the most with what we have and do it best. Um, uh, so right now, we're between a rock and a hard place on that spending. I mean, it's, it's putting it toward, you know, the, the immediate repairs, and I guess the other piece, sort of to clarify, and again, I suspect you know this, but between now and the next meeting, two and a half weeks from now, the staff isn't just gonna be sitting around and waiting to move forward. They're gonna be doing something absolutely every day, so, um, I didn't wanna leave that open ended.
Yeah, no, I, okay.
Real quick, just thought of something maybe we can pursue. Uh, right down the street, we have FEMA. FEMA does emergency situations, right, nationwide? Can we ask them? We had a representative. I don't see him right now, but.
It would have to declare, it would have to be a different type of declared emergency for FEMA to step in.
It has to be, like, at a national level, federal level?
Federal.
Well, maybe they know something that can help us out. I mean, they're, it's a source we could consult. They're right down the street.
Well, um, wait a minute, um, can you, uh, well, when the staff talks to the county and, and, and to the other organizations, uh, and, um, get all your information, maybe we can ask if we can get any help with, with filters from, maybe, if, if we can get help with our town till we get our brown water situation done or figured out.
Right. Yeah, I mean.
She can ask the, and, and, you know, go ahead, Kyle.
It's unfortunate that we don't have the county's report, you know, and I don't wanna speculate too much or move forward on anything with a plan until we know, you know, like, the comment, I, I spoke to him briefly on the phone, and his comment was, we don't know the true source yet, because we're still working on it. And that's why I don't wanna speculate. I don't wanna say we need to do this, this, and this. I'm just giving you kind of ideas that have been kicked around by the county and by our staff, and we'll have a more definitive answer, um, from them by the third. Um, I can certainly ask them about filters, but, um, like, like I said, or what I relayed from the town attorney was, you know, that there's really no emergency funds available for filters, and it ultimately then falls on your taxpayers to pay for the filters. So, they're paying for them anyway.
And I, I could, I could hear murmurings out in the crowd, you know, we're not a natural disaster. That's the only time FEMA steps in. I get that, but.
You know, it is an emergency to our residents, but in the definition of a true emergency, I don't know that FEMA or any, anybody else would deem it that, because MDE and the county, you know, we're still waiting on the testings, but nobody's come out and said that this is a health scare. There's, you know, there's no boil lar, uh, uh, boil alerts, um, things of that nature. So, we're not, we're not to that point, and I'm not trying to minimize anybody's, anybody's problems at all. Um, but that's why I think that you're not seeing the response that, um, maybe you would expect to see from some other agencies. But most certainly, reaching out to, to help with funding is what we can, you know, something we can do now.
Eric, do you have a filter on your house?
Yes, there are fourteen dollars and some change for two of them.
So, you change those every day?
Every three days.
Every three days?
Picture in mind, if you'd like to see it in three days.
Oh, I, I, I know what to look like. I've seen them from the other houses.
And that, in fact, was something we talked to the county about, of why maybe it's hitting certain houses and why it's not hitting, you know, it's leapfrogging, and, and one of the things, you know, why maybe it's pulling on filters harder and everything? And it's a matter of looking at what your, your service line is, what your line from the curb box to your house is made of, what's the condition of that line? And maybe the water coming in from us is something's happening in that, um, is it's corrosive with that line? And that was something that the county had talked about, cause I, I, I had asked why it hits this house and not this house, and, you know, so, but hopefully, we will know more.
All righty. Anybody else have any other questions?
Not related to this, Nessar.
One last thing, if, if you guys.
Come on up here if you're gonna talk.
Just real quick, so, if you would, maybe you guys just send out some letters to all the homeowners in Emmitsburg, let them know we're having meetings? Cause, you know, a lot of people don't even know this is going on, that we're talking about this stuff. I mean, I know it's fairly new. You know, there might be a lot of people, there's, there's a lot of people in Emmitsburg that still care and have some wealth, that, you know, everybody might chip in a little bit, trying here and there, and, you know, it's a dollar in the pot.
It's on Facebook. Everybody sees it. I'm, I'm, I don't have Facebook.
But the, but the older, you know, the older, the older citizens who has a little more wealth, who aren't on Facebook, might see that letter in the mail, and I wouldn't bank on it, but, you know.
So, it goes out in our newsletter, all the media. This was a special meeting, so, you know, that was determined, a special meeting. We tried to get the word out as, as much as possible. Um, the newsletters, we list all our meetings in, so, um, and then Channel ninety-nine, that's what a lot of, um, people use in town to get notices and, and some others. And then the Facebook and the website and Alert Frederick, please sign up for it. That at least tells you when work's going on.
So, we will have a, 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 a good update probably by the February third meeting. She'll have all the information hopefully back to her by then. Staff will have, oh, that, can let everybody know what's going on then.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? All righty, I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and I'd like to thank staff for the presentation, and, and hopefully, we'll get this problem done. Mr. Mayor?
Nessar, say something to thank you, uh, it's just on behalf of myself and the staff, we, we run that part of, that's our business, uh. Water is our number-one priority service. It always has been, and everybody's been up here, and, uh, um, we're trying to find out what this was. I think when it first started, like, in, in October, and then it stopped, and so, well, maybe it's one of those cadence things like you have, like some people experienced at your house, sir? And, and, uh, and then all of a sudden, it came again, and again, yeah, but it has always been our number-one priority, uh, and no matter what, whatever we're doing, it always comes back that now. And, and I know we wanna start a, a committee. Uh, I'm just worried about getting too many chefs in the kitchen, but we'll do it. Uh, uh, that means somebody who's doing something, uh, on our staff will have to stop and talk to somebody else about it. I, we're already talking to the county and MDE. We're, we're getting, uh, input from everybody, and, uh, as Ms. Willis pointed out, um, short-term plan, long-term plan. Our, our short-term plan is, we're gonna be out there digging right now, because that's what we can do to find a cure, cure to these, this problems, uh, what they're doing right now. If it costs us twenty grand here, fifteen there, we, we'll figure out something there, and we've already started the long-term plan. Uh, we've already talked to USDA, we've talked to MDE, we've talked, we're talking to everybody about funding and getting grants for this, and also, uh, what we should put into our budget next year, uh, and where to go, uh, grants. And, uh, we have some very resourceful grant writers on staff, um, I think they did three hundred thousand or four hundred thousand last year. All that takes time, so that's why we're gonna stay on the short-term plan, and that may seem wasteful. But we gotta do something to get to the long-term plan. Long-term plan always means you gotta, you have the plan, you have to plan it, and you have to, uh, have studies done to see what you gotta do and where it's going, all that stuff, so. Well, we're gonna, we're, we're tacking for everything, but, um, uh, I had the water line torn up right in front of our house on, um, on South Seaton, you know, a couple of years ago. So, no, um, thank you for being here. We really wanna hear from everybody all the time, and, uh, share our experiences on this to make it better. And, uh, well, they, staff is flat out on this. I mean, there, there's not, uh, no room for, uh, to squeeze a lemon or anything here, but thank you. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else? As the mayor said, we want to thank everybody for coming. I know it was a, a special meeting. We probably get out in two weeks to find, you know, trying to get on top of this brown water situation, but we are definitely working on it. Everyone in, in the town staff is working on this problem, trying to find the, what's causing this brown water, so. We're doing, we're doing everything we possibly can, and staff and the county, and so, we'll let the citizens and residents know as much as we can, and keep an eye on the TV and the webpage and stuff, and they'll have it all out if they can get it out. And come to the next meeting, cause there will be more information coming out then, February third. Thank you.
How about case, Stan?
Agenda, agenda item number C. What you got? Modification of the meetings for the agenda for the February third meeting.
Mayor just would like to add, under admin business, um, uh, proclamation thanking Roger Wilson for his service. And then I think Commissioner Davis wants to add an amendment to the ball field agreements, making them good for two years. That's all I have.
Just one more, maybe, um, the recent Eagle Scout awardees, I, I may bring them here, just for Matt to.
We're gonna put that in administration, too?
Yeah, be recognized. They'd be really, really, they'll all be quick.
Mr. Sweeney?
If I can make one comment, though, um, that we make sure we get to Michelle.
Yes, she could.
Absolutely.
At this, at this, um, town meeting.
We will, definitely.
So, um, you currently have the water quality update under admin business, which will come before her. Just keep that in mind.
Mr. Sweeney?
Uh, yes, Mr. Donald.
Um, I've had some interest in trail dates. Is it possible to announce tra, or get approval from the board or consideration from the board under administration business for trail dates?
We can.
Thank you, sir.
Or can we do that consent agenda? Do we have to have approval?
Yeah, that's fine.
Consent would be great, yes, sir. Thank you.
Anything else? We have a big agenda again?
Hey, Mr. Fulton, hey, Tim.
Um, Mr. Davis?
Can we do comments?
Yes.
Okay, this is a good thing. Uh, Little League signup softball for girls, all that stuff is happening right now. Uh, we're all gonna be under Thermo Little League, Thermo Babe Ruth, or Catoctin Rec softball for girls. There will be games here held in Emmitsburg. Uh, right now, Little League's schedule is ready to come out, and there'll be games here at least three days a week. So, um, get your kids signed up, and we're trying to get stuff back here in, into Emmitsburg, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Ritz?
I have nothing, no.
Mr. Donald? I do say, um, the, the, the bridge is getting completed. I see the sidewalks are going in the both sides. They're almost completed on the one side, and they're gonna be starting to take out the other temporary bridge. So, it's coming together. Spring can't come before we know it, so we can get those people out of the way.
But we have a meeting on February third. We might find something out.
Yes. Uh, thanks for everyone for coming. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second. Motion to be made by Commissioner Donald, second by Commissioner Davis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Meeting ends at nine.